Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our business evening meeting. It's Tuesday, December 3rd, and we're excited to have a meeting tonight. It's really festive in here with, we've got an elementary school Christmas tree that's been decorated for the boardroom, and then a bell choir tonight, so really fun to celebrate the holiday season. We're going to begin with an introduction of our student body officer that's here tonight on behalf of Davis High School, and then following that Cruz will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hello, everybody. I am Cruz Rushton. I'm the student body president at Davis High. And just a little background on who I am as a person, I, this gives you just a little of how unserious I am, but I collect Legos in my free time. It's a little fun. I play baseball for the Davis High baseball team and very proud of our season last year is great. But yeah, that's just a little background on me.
Perfect, and we'll get to hear a little bit more from Cruz later when he shares an update from Davis High School. That was a fun introduction. So Cruz, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then we'll move on to our agenda items. Thank you. I'm going to invite Ms. Shanda Stinger to come forward. She's going to introduce the bell choir that's performing this evening.
President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Board and Superintendency, we are really excited to have the Davis High bell choir come and perform. They will be performing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer directed by Marcy May, and they are a five octave bell choir that is a really, really unique class that is held at Davis High. I think they're the only high school that has that, so we're really excited to have them perform Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer.
Wow, that was just amazing. I didn't even know bells could make some of those sounds. That was great. Let's have your bell choir, if you'll join us over here by the Christmas tree, and we'll invite your principal and Ms. May and the superintendent to come over. We'll do a picture, and Ms. Julie Powell has a certificate for your group. Thank you so much for performing tonight. That was just amazing. Yeah, if you want to bring a bell over for the photo, that would be awesome. Thank you again. I'm guessing there's lots of bell choir families out in the audience, so thank you to all those parents and those who are here to support the bell choir tonight. We really appreciate you and the time that your students have put into this. Thank you for sharing that talent. You are welcome to stay for as much of our board meeting as you like. We're going to give a minute to, I think, are we moving the bell tables out? So we'll give them a minute to transition out, and you're welcome to stay or join your students out in the foyer. Great, thank you so much. We're going to move on to our public comment period. There's an opportunity in each of our business meetings for comments from members of the public who reside within Davis County or who work in Davis School District. It's not an opportunity to air complaints or make specific issues about a student or where there's other avenues, but we encourage members of our community to comment. And tonight we will invite Angie Oskathorpe up first, and you'll hear a two-minute timer go off over on that side of the auditorium when your time's up. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, President Mumford, and Vice President Gerard, and Superintendent, and the school board. I, first of all, just want to say, we so appreciate what you do. We know sometimes it's a thankless job, and if everything goes perfectly, there's no words, but if anything happens, then you hear it. So anyway, want to say thank you for your, for your service. I also just want to say, as the president of the Davis Chamber, that, you know, business and education go hand in hand. And you've heard me, if you've heard me at one of the teen centers, I say that all the time. And I get the very big honor of being on the Davis Education Foundation, and I just love the work that we do there. I love that we get to support our students, and it's the right thing to do, and it also helps us as we are preparing our future workforce. And so anyway, I just want to say, of course, you all know the things that we do there with Jody Lunt and the whole board, but we just really appreciate the opportunity that we have to, to serve. Jody's on my board, I'm on her board. We support each other. We support you. I have so many friends here and in the, in the room. So I just want to say, thank you so much for the support that you give, and we are honored to help the students and to, and to help our community be better. And so we appreciate what you do and appreciate the chance that I have to specifically to, to be part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I think it's really fitting to have you here tonight, this time of year, when the Education Foundation's making a difference in the lives of so many students. So thank you, and please share that thanks to the Chamber, because they're a big part of it. Next up, we have Shelley Vanoy, also from the Education Foundation.
Good evening. I won't take too much time, but just to echo my good friend's comments as well. Shelley Vanoy and I represent a, I represent Linquist, actually. Linquist is a private organization, company up here. If you're not from this area, we're mortuary and funeral services. And I'm lucky enough that I get to work for a company that supports me to serve on the Davis Education Foundation. And I feel blessed and privileged to do that, and I feel blessed and privileged to work amongst you all and what we do, serving on the, on the foundation board to make the difference that we do in the lives of every student, however we touch them, if we touch them directly or if we touch them indirectly. So in this time of giving and thanks, we just, I wanted to make sure we came here and let you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. We appreciate your service on the foundation board. Next, we have Corey Fairholme from the PTA.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight. My name is Corey Fairholme. I am the Utah PTA president, and I could listen to those bells all night long. I wanted some more, so. It's a privilege to stand before you today to share a message about the power of PTA and the profound impact that our schools, that PTA has on our schools, our children, and our communities. And I appreciate the time that I have been able to meet with Dr. Limford and to talk about the importance of PTA. And the PTA is just not a name or an organization. It's a movement, a movement driven by the belief that every child, no matter their circumstances, deserves the opportunity to reach their full potential. Our mission is clear and powerful, to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. And when a PTA is present in a school, it is a beacon of collaboration. It unites parents, teachers, and administrators, creating a bridge that fosters communication, understanding, and collective action. Together, we build programs that enhance education, strengthen family engagement, and provide resources that our children need to succeed. Let us remember, when parents and educators join forces, incredible things happen. Together, we transform challenges into opportunities and obstacles into achievements. PTA isn't just something that benefits one school or one child. It benefits every child and every school. Thank you for believing in the power of PTA and for being part of this important work. Let's continue to make a difference together. Thank you for supporting PTA in your schools and being part of the team PTA, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about the importance of PTA. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Corey. We really appreciate the partnership of the PTA and our schools. It's a really important part of school community. Mara is also here from PTA in our region, so I'll turn the time over to her for two minutes.
Okay, thank you, school board. I'm here with a lot of hats tonight. So I'm, I'm also part of the Latin Communities That Care. And in our meeting yesterday, they talked about a youth listening session where they asked kids in Davis County about the issues facing them. And one of the things that came up is that the kids feel that they are under pressure. They just feel this enormous pressure coming to them from all different sides. And what they really would like is for people just to tell them that they're okay, that they're doing okay, and to have the hard work that they're doing be recognized. So also, right after this meeting, I was subbing at Centennial because the stomach flu is going around, and so I was there helping out. And in walks the most amazing aide in the library that you could ever hope to have. Like she was sunlight herself. Her name is Debbie. And all the kids, the kids came in from the hall to talk to Debbie. Debbie talked to each kid, and she really helped them. She was the one that was there saying, "You're amazing. You're doing good. How was your weekend?" She knew all the kids by name. So tonight, I wanted to come and just give a shout out to all of the aides that work in the Davis School District and for the one-on-one connection that they have, and to let them know that their efforts are appreciated and that they're seen and that they're making a difference. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mara. That's a great recognition. We have so many amazing support professionals that impact students. I appreciate that. That's the end of our public comment period. We're going to move into recognition, and we've got a great high school championship team here tonight. So I'll turn the time over to Dave Tanner, and he's going to introduce the Bountiful High champions.
President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, wonderful school board, Superintendent Limford, and Mr. Tim Leffle, thank you so much. It is an honor this evening to present to you the state championship football team of Bountiful High, the Red Hawks. And just a couple of little things I wanted to share with you. Last year, they took second place. And this year, they just proved themselves to be true champions on and off the field. I'm going to just go share a couple of things. But in leadership, we had leadership that day, the day that they were doing the state championship game against Roy. And at that last couple of minutes, Rick and Tracy's presentation was interrupted, so we could watch the last few minutes of the game. And so all the assistant principals in the district, everything, were there just cheering them on, and when they scored that final touchdown, it erupted inside this leadership meeting. So they were supported from afar, as well as the hundreds and hundreds of fans and parents at the game. Now, just something else I wanted to share with you. We received word from the University of Utah, from their athletic department, of the honorary citizenship of the, of the team and the coach, because they are one of the few teams that left the locker room as good as they found it. And that says a lot to the credibility of these young men and the training they've received from their coaches. So at this time, I'm going to turn a minute over to President Will Warnock, and he'll introduce the team and who's here. Thank you.
President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Superintendent Limford, and members of the board, these are my boys. And it's fun to win, right? The goal of all we do is to get an A on a test or to win the championship. That should always be your goal. But I'm going to tell you, these guys are better young men than they are football players. In five years, we have not had one discipline referral on a football player, not one. They live what they, they've been taught. They believe in character. They believe in resolve. They're goofy. They're silly, but they are better young men than they are football players. I am more proud of who they are off the field than the ring that they earned on the field. So this is part of their leadership council, and they run the team. And these are two of their coaches. Their head coach had a family thing tonight, and he wanted to apologize that he couldn't be here, but Coach Walker and Coach Manu, they mold these young men, and I am so proud to wear this B because of what they represent. So, Coach, do you want to add anything? I know you would.
I couldn't say anything more than what Principal Warnock has already said, but it's been a pleasure of mine being a part of Davis School District. And there's, all sorts of people have always come up and complimented us since winning last week. And it just goes to show you how much support there is amongst a broad group of people in Davis County and how we kind of all had each other's back in hoping that we would be able to do what we did. It got brought to my attention that we haven't won a state championship in football in Davis County in 20 years, 20-plus years. And obviously, I, I think the open enrollment that's outside of Davis has created super teams, and so it was hard to be able to overcome that. We had a lot of great teams at Bountiful, at the other Davis schools, and so just to finally be able to crack through and win that last one was really meaning something. I remember waking up on that morning, and I had the biggest pit in my stomach because I just knew that we had to win this game because of what these guys represent off of the field. And I haven't been a part of a group or a team that has always done the right things all the time. And yes, there's a few things here and there, but collectively, I haven't ever been around a group like this. And so being able to get that last victory and, and be able to award these guys with it, it just meant so much. And I appreciate everything that they represent, and been lucky to rub shoulders with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's give them a round of applause. Mr. John Robinson represents your area on the school board, and he's going to share a certificate and maybe a couple of thoughts for you. He got to come to your games and watch you win, and we're just all so proud of you and the kind of athletes and sportsmen that you represent. Thank you.
I saw the semifinal and the final, and these guys were outmanned by Brighton and by Roy. Not the quality of athlete, but who's the right guard? Anybody here is the right guard? Don't know who it was. But we look at this, my wife and I are up there, and I said, "Look at that little guy that's the right guard, and the kid that's coming at him in the defensive front four is like twice his size." And that little guy, he just battled him and battled him and battled him. They, in my opinion, they should have never beaten Wright, just based on talent. But they had what it takes. And Principal Warnock, as, what you're referring to, Coach, you know, it just came out. We were really proud as we watched and saw. The sportsmanship, just, just good people. And I know Dr. Best, our district athletic director, you know, shared the comments that you made regarding the locker room. And that's unheard of. That's unheard of. That's a great reflection on these two gentlemen, they were coaches, or they're still coaching staff, as well as these athletes. So very, very proud of them. This is what it's all about, is to do the best you can with what you have. And when you compete the way they compete, you're going to have a chance to come out on top, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. We, we welcome the football families and students to stay, or you're welcome to also slip out if you've got other commitments. I know it's a very busy time of year. We're going to move on to our next agenda items. And Mr. Robinson, you're actually up first. He'll be sharing a report from his service on the USBA. Mr. Robinson. Oh, I skipped one.
Good try. Good try, Liz.
We've got one more recognition. So I'll turn the time over to Ms. Gerard. That really, I just checked it off and moved right on.
That was a good, good try, but in, in fact, Liz and John probably aren't going to like this, but we want to take the next few minutes to honor them, because this will be their last board meeting. And after eight years of hard work and dedication to children in Davis School District, they deserve a tribute. So that's what we're going to do. Everyone wanted a chance to say something, so let me just tell you how that's going to go. We're going to start talking about John Robinson, and each board member will have an opportunity to say something. Then we will talk about Liz. And at some point, John and Liz, you'll get a chance to say something if you would like to. And then afterward, we have a gift for each of them, and we'll bring up, bring them up. And I don't know if families are here tonight, but I don't see, is Russ, where's Russ? Anyway, you'll get to come up too, and we'll take pictures with everybody. So let me just start with the, some brief introductions. John Robinson has been a member of the Davis Board of Education since January of 2017. He has served as board president for six of those eight years. Previous to serving on the board, John was an educator, coach, and counselor in Davis School District, and in the district office as well. Being a strong leader comes naturally to John. He's firm when he needs to be, and yet kind. He has a passion for education, sports, and coaching. And much of the way sports are run in Davis School District is due to the work and ethics of John Robinson. Most importantly, John is a great husband, father, and grandfather, and great-grandfather. He and his wife Joan have five children, 18 grandchildren, children, and one great-grandchild. So we are going to start down here with Mr. Leffle and come down this way, and you can say whatever you would like about John, and then we're going to come back down this way.
I can't say whatever I would like.
Well, just be careful. No, be nice now.
Well, I was lucky enough to get to know John when he was an employee. I had just started with the district, and he had come back to the district, and I was fortunate. And we golfed together with Mr. Carter and myself and some others, and he got to be a good friend. And we would joke around a lot, and so when he became a board member, I was worried I would lose my job. So I was lucky that that didn't happen. But I'm truly going to miss John, your personality, your leadership, your little one-liners that always make us all smile. Going to miss that so much and wish you so much success in the future. Thank you.
All right. It's kind of funny for me, because I feel like I've admired a lot of these leaders from afar, watching board members like all of us have as parents and just being involved. But I always knew that John was an educator. I knew that he loved sports and athletics. That was fun. And he had been involved with a lot of different things in the school district, always had a really great knowledge. But getting to work with him directly behind the scenes, what, what I learned and what just is so hard to convey in a, a meeting like this, is just the genuine love that John has for students and for education. So often, we'll be discussing any item, and we're, we'll get caught up in details, you know, whether it's budget or timelines, whatever, and John always has the reminder, like, "Let's think about the students. How does this impact the students?" Because that's what we're here for, and that's, that's who we serve. And so even if he's not going to be on the board anymore, I hope that we'll have that constant reminder in our hearts that, that that's truly why we're here and to remember every student, especially those who sometimes are often overlooked. So thank you, John, for that focus.
All right. So John, in my opinion, is a legend in Davis School District. I've known about John for over 30 years. I went to high school with his two sons and his daughter-in-law, and we have many mutual friends and acquaintances. So I, I always heard about John Robinson. And when I decided to run, I met him and just, he, he lives up to the hype. And I'm just, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with John these last two years. And he has been an incredible mentor and friend to me. And I just have learned so much from your experience, your wisdom, and your perspective. I really appreciate you. He's a born leader, and he's taught me so much about good leadership. He's kind, he's wise, and he's funny, and I appreciate all of those qualities. And I'm going to miss you, my friend. Thank you so much.
Okay. So I was told some scary things about John before I started working with him, but most of them have turned out not to be true. No, none of them were true. The reason I can tease him is because of his sense of humor. And I remember being so surprised and delighted with it when I first started working with him. He's always ready with a joke, so we don't take ourselves too seriously. John reached out to me from the beginning to help. And when I was, when I was first on the board, I suffered with a really bad case of imposter syndrome and thought everybody could see straight through me. syndrome and thought everybody could see straight through me. But behind the scenes, John encouraged me and he reminded me, this is Dan's fault, by the way, reminded me of parts of my character that could be of value to the board. So he helped me gain the confidence I needed. We have disagreed on philosophies or procedures, but he is someone I have called for advice even in those disagreements. I think of the amount of time he has given to the Davis School District and it's significant. Of course, I can only speak to the few years I've worked with him, but he's remarkable in what he's achieved in his life. And the little things that he does is what makes all the difference. And just one of those things is that at every meeting, he comes and he comes and greets every single one of us. And like they say, it's those small and simple things that make the difference. So thank you, John. We'll miss you.
Just a few words to describe John. He's a strong leader. He has the heart and mind of an educator. He always seems to know the right thing to say in any situation. He knows what is important and he keeps us all laughing and we have needed that. We're going to miss, miss you.
I didn't know we were.
I didn't know we were going to talk tonight, but I am not going to miss an opportunity to share some things that I love about John. We got elected together and I will tell you that John has been a mentor from the very beginning and I've appreciated that both when I was a new board member and when we got to serve together in leadership. He is a fearless champion of students. And an example I thought of is when we first started exploring teen centers. And when John gets a vision for something, he knows how to bring all the people to the table to make it happen. And our district is forever changed because of that vision and I'm grateful for that, John. You're amazing.
I'm going to do a good job of keeping it together. You're going to be proud of me. We'll see. Famous last words. You know, I've known John for twenty years. And he is, I'm terrible.
You're not doing.
What did I even think I could do? Big talk, Dan. I agree, he's a legend. And he's been that since, you know, from the time I came into education, I remember as an assistant principal, standing with, you know, Casey Layton and a few other assistants as John was running one of our very first trainings I went to as a district administrator in the summer. And he had a breakout session and was talking about athletics and those things. And he just, you know, he has command presence. And I'm someone who's studied leadership my life, my whole life. And I taught it as a teacher and I studied it in my doctoral program. And John is the quintessential leader because he's going to do the right thing, whether it's popular or not. And that comes with some slings and arrows in difficult times. And the world has been in difficult times over the last several years. And this is a man who is willing to stand up and take the slings and arrows to do what is right for kids. So super grateful for his mentoring and his example and really appreciate his sense of humor because this really could have been a roast. We really could have just smoked John all night long. So really, really love you, John.
Well, gosh, I'm the last person here. So John takes his job really seriously and as you get to know him, he really does care about the students for sure. It was interesting, as I was sort of on the board, getting to know a little bit about his background and some of the tough things he's been through. And he uses that as kind of his motivation for why he cares for the students. I'm going to echo what so many people said. The thing that I'm going to miss most is his one-liners. He always like somehow can come up with something hilarious and we're going to miss having that and good luck to you.
Okay. Just want to say a little bit about Liz and we'll come back this way and you guys will get a chance to talk too, if you want to. That was awesome hearing the comments about John. And we want to hear what everyone has to say about Liz. Liz Mumford has also been a member of the Davis Board of Education since January of 2017, so almost eight years. She currently serves as our amazing board president and she's also served as vice president. Previous to serving on the board, she taught in Davis School District. Liz is an outstanding leader and mentor. She is very knowledgeable about business and finance and lots of other things. She's passionate about trust lands and school community councils, about women in business and in leadership. And what you might not know is Liz also serves on several nonprofit boards and has been quietly directing charity work throughout the world. And she does that quietly. Most importantly, Liz is an amazing wife and mom. And she and her husband, Russ, who's here tonight, have four boys, two of whom are married, so they added two daughter-in-laws to their family last year. Okay, you get to be first, John, if you want.
Well, to repeat, we did get elected together, Liz and I. And when we were running for the board, I didn't know who Liz was. I didn't know Bridget either. But I heard so many good things about both of them. And Liz being in my area, there were so many people that talked to me about Liz. And I think, you know, her integrity, her work ethic, her commitment to doing whatever she is responsible to do or what she feels needs to be done is second to none. She's bright but humble. She never comes across as having the right answer. She comes across as being willing to speak, but also, and even more importantly, for all of us to be able to listen. And at the end of the day, at the end of the conversation, Liz isn't going to stomp her feet if she doesn't get her way. She's going to do what the group decides and she's going to be full speed. And I have the greatest respect for her, not only as a school board member, but as a person. So I appreciate our friendship.
So some of you guys were here last night. We had a school board and some leadership get-together. And Liz presented a poem called "If." It's a very famous poem by Richard Kipling. And it talks about, she was talking about how during COVID and, oh, by the way, watching what the school board had to deal with during COVID, I was like, "I am never doing this job ever." But anyway, here I am. But it's so interesting because at least my mom tells me, my mom said that Richard Kipling, who wrote that poem, is my ancestor. I haven't verified that. But my mom gave me this poem, like on this big cloth thing, and I have it over my bed. And it was, I appreciate that, you know, when things can get tough and no matter what you say and people misinterpret what you say or what you think all the time when you're up here or in any leadership position, but I appreciate the times that Liz has been, what's the word for it, diplomatic about that and a good example. So thank you.
If I could, I'm awesome when I talk about curriculum. It's when I talk about people, okay? Liz is someone who, when I was a, when I was an area director, I, on many occasions, on several occasions, I texted her, sent an email to thank her for her comments in a board meeting. And I've been in education a long time and I've, because I have this fear of looking like a kiss-up, honestly. And I would sometimes, I think, lead this text with, "I'm not kissing up and I'm not," I know this might be weird, but that was incredible what you just said. And I've, I've never been let down since she's led this board. She is the, just the brightest human being. And, you know, it's one thing to, I say this to my wife all the time, you know, it's one thing to say something smart in a board meeting once or twice a month, but when you're, when you're really trying to run the show and you're really relied upon daily by the school district to help us make decisions and to step into really big committees that drive most of the work that we do, she is incredible. She's the real deal. She's bright all the time, inspiring all the time. So going to miss, I won't look at her, but going to miss her mentoring and just the power that she brings to our organization as a school district.
Okay. Some words to describe Liz. She's just, she has outstanding leadership qualities and such a great board president. She's a talented speaker. This has been mentioned, she's so smart. She has such a great business mind and financial savvy. She's able to bring people together and that's a talent that not everybody has. She's able to see the big picture and put it all together for others. And she's very dedicated to service. So we will miss, miss you.
Okay, well, I'm going to echo, Liz is smart. Have you guys heard the words she uses in conversation? So Liz has been my mentor and I have often asked myself, as I've done this calling, how would Liz handle this? Or like, how would she respond to this email? Because she always navigates difficult situations with such poise and grace and intelligence. She has taken such great effort to incorporate all our differing opinions on the board in the policies we do and our motions and our board statements. And this is why she is such a great leader, because she never makes it about her. Just really quick on a personal note, I remember one time I didn't agree with a certain action the board was making and she took great pains to hear me out and worked to amend the statement so I would feel more comfortable with it. In the end, I felt like I needed to vote against the action and she encouraged me to do what I thought I needed to do. I felt like she respected me even if she disagreed with me. Thank you. She's grounded, she's fair, and she treats everyone with respect, even those who are unkind to her. And so she's become a dear friend and I can't wait to see what she does next through life.
Okay. Liz, you are an incredible leader. And while I was campaigning, I would come and attend board meetings. And then when I was elected, I knew immediately that I wanted to choose you to be our board president. And it has just been an honor to work with you and to learn from you. You're wise, you're smart, you're articulate, and you're kind. And I've been so impressed with your ability to listen to people. And I truly believe that your intent is to listen to understand. And I love, I love how Kristin said it, that you have taken all of our opinions and perspectives into consideration and it's, it's so appreciated. So thank you. And it truly is a gift and a talent. And you make everybody feel heard. You're open-minded, you're incredibly hardworking and organized, and you have set the bar high for those of us that remain on the board. But I'm grateful for that. I think it's, it's good to have that, those high standards. And thank you so much for your great example and your friendship. And I will miss you very much. Thank you.
It's been said that the mark of a true leader is how they leave their space when their time is over. And my experience getting to work with Liz and just her final year of her service is a testament to the fantastic leader that she is. I've admired Liz for a really long time, like I said, mostly from afar. But when I started on the school board last year, my goal was to just learn as much as I could from her in the short time we had together. Like they said, Liz is a wizard with policy and with initiatives. She has moved this district forward in such a positive way. And I echo what Dr. Linford talked about. It's one thing to stand up here and say a lot of words, but Liz actually does the work. She gets back home, she puts it out, and she actually puts ideas and thoughtfulness into action. And that is a true leader. She's a great communicator. I've read hundreds of emails that she's sent. And once again, I hope that I'll still have her voice in the back of my mind as I respond to parents and teachers and students and sometimes some really tricky situations, but I have learned so much from her thoughtful approach. And she's such a great advocate for education. And like I said, the mark of a true leader, how they leave their space. And Liz has stayed committed to her very last day. She's tied up loose ends. She's set a vision for us to keep going forward. And that's a, that's an example that I really hope that I learn from in the future. When I think of the areas of influence that Liz has and the capacity that she has, I think it's truly boundless. And I'm just so excited to see where this next phase takes you. Thank you, Liz.
One thing Mr. Carter and I would always do when we get a new board member is we'd invite them in to have a little session about school finance. It's a fun-filled hour of learning about how schools are funded in the district. And I remember when Craig and I met with Liz and she left the meeting, both of us looked at each other and kind of said, "Wow." And we've watched Liz grow from a brand-new board member who was just curious and eager to learn to, use my Lord of the Rings reference, "The one board president to rule them all." Amazing job, Lynn. Thank you, sir Liz, so much. We're going to miss you.
Well, this has been said tonight, but Liz and John and I started on the board about eight years ago together. It's hard to believe that it's been eight years, but we have been through a lot together. When we experienced what we did during that difficult time in the pandemic, we formed a friendship and a bond that could never be broken. And it has been my privilege to work with both of these outstanding individuals. I have learned so much from each of them. They are both exceptional leaders and just great people. I highly respect them. I love them and I will miss each of them immensely. The good that they have done for the children in Davis School District can never be measured. Thank you for all you have done. We wish you the very, very best in your new endeavors. And after you say a few words, we have something for each of you that we'll present, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to say something if you would like to.
Wow, I'm going to let John have the last word. I think the words you heard tonight, which were really gracious and we appreciate them, they say more about this group of people than they say about us. This is a board that I have so much confidence in, in moving forward and leading in this district and working in collaboration with our superintendency and administrators. They have the best interests and intent as they work through challenges and work on policies and manage our finances and take that constitutional responsibility very seriously. And I'm grateful for every one of them, but most of all, they are just really good humans. They're the very best people. And it's been a privilege to serve with each of you in different levels of service over the last years. And I know that we've got lots of opportunities ahead. I told Bridget, we might have to make like an old lady school board lunch group and John may or may not want to come with us, but we'll figure out a way to stay in touch. So thank you. I love you guys.
Well, first of all, thank you for your nice comments. I appreciate so much. Not only your comments, but our friendship. You know, I think that all of us that are in the educational community in Davis School District, we just feel the commonality of what we're doing and where we're going. And to be part of that is a wonderful opportunity. After having served as president for six years and being at that microphone, I wanted to share a quick story with you that might help you appreciate why I say what I say after that. Our son was finishing his medical residency in Rochester, New York. He had two little children, a four-year-old and a two-year-old, getting ready to come home. And he was working a hundred hours a week. And it was the following day, we were going to try to get ready and, you know, load and get out of there. So he wasn't there. My daughter-in-law, my wife, and myself were there with the two kids. And my wife and daughter-in-law were in the kitchen getting, frantically getting dinner. And I was back and forth and talking to them, talking to the kids and doing the very best we could to get, to get, just get ready. And I went back in the kitchen and I said, "Are you about ready to eat? You want, you want us to bless the food?" Finally, I just said, "All right, I'm going to bless the food." And I came out into the little dining area where my four-year-old granddaughter and two-year-old grandson was. And my four-year-old granddaughter said to me, "Stop. We've heard enough from you." She says, "Somebody else is going to pray. You're not praying." So I say that because So I say that because you've heard enough from me. You know, the eight years where we've all had a chance to say different things. You, you've heard enough from me. But I, I would just leave you with, the first year I taught was at Kennedy Junior High School in Kearns. And I have to tell you that the reason I went into education was to be a coach. I did not go into education to be a teacher. I loved the opportunity to coach. But those days, you had to be a teacher. So I bought the cute shorts that coaches wear. I bought the T-shirt that was a half-size too small that coaches wear. And I went to that school prancing around, realizing without any doubt that I was one of the coolest guys on campus. And I, I just thought, this is, I mean, this is heaven. And I was a PE teacher. And I had a young ninth grader in my class who didn't dress the majority of the time. And being cool and being tough and nobody was gonna not do what Coach Robinson said, of course, I got on this kid. And then he was, you know, obstinate about it. He was really a jerk. Well, what do you do with jerks? You take them down to the office. So I hauled, hauled him down to the office, knowing that the vice principal would just rip him up one side and down the other. And I took him in there and that vice principal started to talk to this young man. And he was just talking with him and he was asking him some questions. And I'm sitting there thinking, get on with this, you know, slap him, do what you're gonna do. But he challenged me. And nobody's gonna challenge me because I'm the tough, cool coach. And then, sitting, sitting to where I could see this little guy, he started to have tears run down his cheeks. And then he proceeded to tell the vice principal why he didn't dress for PE. It was because his dad beat him with a waffle cord. He took his shirt off and his, his back was hamburger. It was, it was the worst thing I could ever see. And at that moment, I changed my philosophy. I didn't really think about coaching being that important anymore. What I thought about was how important every kid was. And not knowing what that kid went through either that morning or maybe the night before or whatever. And I resolved that day that I would try to make the kids that I taught have a better life. You know, just by trying to be funny with them or just, you know, just be kind like, like we do. So I look back at that experience with embarrassment, but also with a great deal of appreciation. Because it shaped, you know, what I did from that 1970-71 school year to today. So I, I hope you know where my heart is. It's with those kids. It's with the teachers that teach those kids. And as board members, we need to continue to do, as we've done, whatever we can do to make the lives of teachers better, because in the process, it makes the lives of students better. So thank you all for what you do. And I appreciate the opportunity that I've had these last eight years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your amazing comments. It's great to hear from everyone and, and from John and Liz. And we have a little something for them. So Superintendent is going to help me come down here. And we want John and Liz to come down and, and we want Russ to come up. We're going to present these and then take photos. And we can use separate ones. We want the rest of the board to come for some photos also. But we'll present this, I have this one first. For Liz, for dedicated and outstanding service. And hold on, you do that and then I'll get the x.
Fourty years, you get a sleeve of cookies.
I got something else here, too. Okay, here, I'll give you a hug. I don't know where they're gonna put these, but they get to take their nameplates home. So Russ, make sure she has that at her place. Okay, who's doing the photos? Do you want, how do you want this? And the rest of the board? We want the rest of the board in the photos, too? Do you want Russ with Liz first? Okay, okay, so get out the rest of the board. If you wanna put them back for the rest of the meeting, you can. Now we need Russ to come up and take a picture with Liz.
Yeah, Joan's right there. They're checking you in right after.
As board members, we so appreciate our spouses because I know Russ has been a great support to Liz and Joan has to John. So we appreciate you also. Well, that was fun. Yeah, Ms. Mumford gets to take charge of the rest of the meeting.
Thank you for your patience. That was really generous of everyone. I'm gonna switch things up a little bit and let Cruz go, cuz we need some young vibrancy here. Tell us what's going on at Davis High School. And then we'll go back to our USBA report.
Well, just to kinda start off, I wanna congratulate my SBO advisor over here, Eric Gunn, on a great theater performance with Beauty and the Beast these past two weeks. It was absolutely incredible. And I would be shocked if Bronco Maxfield does not win state's best actor this year. And that, if they don't win the state championship this year. So we might have another state championship on our group. But just to kinda focus on a broad idea, I wanna talk about the culture at Davis High School. And to start off, we have a great culture. It is incredible and obviously I have bias here, but I would say that we have probably one of the best cultures out of the district. But just to kinda focus on a few things, I'd like to talk about our sub-santa seasons. Last year was absolutely incredible. We raised funds for our own teen center at Davis High, which is currently under construction. And I believe will be opened soon in the spring, in the next month, which is incredible. And it was, it was amazing to see the efforts that the student body had and the community of Davis High going into that. And we just barely started our fundraising season this year, today, with a kickoff assembly that we held today with a great donation assembly. And we kicked off with a good amount of money. And it was just incredible to see how much the students cared to give for a certain cause and for certain people. And just to shift the focus a little bit for people and individual people. For those of you who do not know, last year I was in a fatal auto pedestrian accident and was lifelighted to the UVU Hospital and was put into a medical-induced coma. And my mom's not gonna like me talking about this part. It was very questionable if I'd be able to make it back alive. And when I woke up and, from my medical-induced coma and came home, it was just the open embracing arms I was able to feel at Davis High School was absolutely incredible. Those people at Davis, the students, the teachers, the administrators. Dr. Hawthorne had to step out of the room, but she's incredible. Just the open arms I felt from all those people, the kindness that is involved at that school. And in recent times, we've had a few students who have passed away in these last few months. And just to see the students come together to support their families and the friends and the siblings of those students is just absolutely incredible. And I have a lot of, I take a lot of pride being able to sit up here with all of you and represent my school. And I just, Davis High is full of great people and great experiences with the play and all of our sports, so, yeah.
Thank you, Cruz. You are a great representative of Davis High and some of the amazing things happening there. Thanks for sharing your personal experience with us. It's a really great example of the way the community rallied around you. And we're so glad that you've had a full recovery. That's amazing. And Beauty and the Beast, wow, just outstanding. It was mentioned a couple of times in our past board meetings. So we are really proud of the amazing production and, and the quality that, that you exemplify. Thank you. Dr. Linford, anything you wanna share about Davis?
Yeah. Obviously, Davis High is just an excellent school. Most of my children went to Davis High School. And I was able to experience, you know, as a parent, a really, really incredible education there. Dr. Wilkie was, was one of our good principals. And Rich Swanson, I don't know if he's still in the room, was, was another, just great leaders in that building. I wanna, probably a terrible idea again, but I wanna say something about Cruz. We, we received, obviously, word about his accident. And we, we, we were, you know, I was reading some of, some of mom's emails that she would send to the administration and, and getting updates from our school directors on how he's doing. And then I hadn't heard much. And the last I had heard, you know, just things weren't looking good, buddy. You know, they were not, they were not looking, when you say, when you say it was, I mean, it was, it was a fatal car accident. It really was. And what we heard over the next several weeks did not sound promising. And then, you know, I, I didn't, I didn't hear much. And honestly, I, I, I forgot about it. It wasn't on my mind until we were at the groundbreaking at the teen center. And I walked up to Cruz, I'm like, buddy, you're, you're maybe the first student, I, I didn't know your name or even what you looked like, but I was praying for you. And you're a miracle. And he's like, I know, I know, for sure I am. You know, he, I love this kid. I love that he recognizes that he is a miracle. And he just comes with this gratitude sincerely, just, just a miracle. And a lot of, a lot of good strangers at the district praying for your recovery. And it's just amazing, amazing to have you here. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Cruz. And you're welcome to share insights tonight as we move through other agenda items as well. Mr. Robinson, your USBA report.
Just a couple of things, board. The upcoming legislative session is just around the corner. We have that legislative breakfast, I think it's next week. There is a strong indication that the legislature might be looking at increasing the funding for vouchers. Speaker of the House on the 19th of November mentioned that. Look, he said he's looking to augment the state's Utah VIT's all voucher program. I would just indicate that there are some groups already, and well, I think we'll see some in the future, that are looking at talking to legislative leaders or legislators and leadership about, before that decision would be made, a lot of folks are asking to see some accountability for the money that's already been appropriated, which is $82 million. At this point in time, there is no indication that there will be accountability. And I think we need to understand that the group that is in, I think they're in Denver, they're called the Alliance for Choice Education. They're a nonprofit, so much of what they have is not available to the general public in relationship to the funding part of it. But there, there was going into this in the initial, initial year that the original $42 million was appropriated. There was a commitment to have an element of accountability. And I would just draw your attention to that and remind all of us that we now have full-day kindergarten, as we know. But before that was, before money was allocated, the legislature asked us as educators, over a five-year period of time, to do an intensive study of the pilot program, report back each year of data to show whether or not this was gonna be a beneficial use of the money. And at the end of that five years, I mean, obviously, what they learned was, was an indication that it was indeed of value. And so after that five years and the accountability that we as an educational district and other educational districts had to show, they appropriated $67 million to fund the additional half-day for the kindergarten. So I think as educators, we just would say, or as public, public school educators, it kinda boils down to, we believe in accountability. I mean, Superintendent Linford and his staff, I mean, there is not a day that goes by that there's not some level of accountability. And much of it is, is to the state, to the legislative level. And we're happy to do that. We should do that. Money should be accounted for and the funding of it. So I think the approach that I would suggest we consider in our conversations with our individual legislators is, we would like to see the accountability of the funding that's already been allocated. Is it doing the kinds of things for those young people to help them in relationship to their, to their education? So Ms. Gerard, I don't know if you have anything in addition to that?
I, I do have a little bit. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Just, just a little side note, we have been pushing the Superintendent's Association, and Superintendent Linford could speak to that, and the Utah School Board Association for that accountability. And as Utah School Board Association, we've been trying to reach out to that company that's administering the program and haven't been able to get any information from them. Even a phone call has taken about four weeks. And we had to go to a legislator to ask them to call us. So, yeah, that's a problem. The accountability is, is a big problem and we need to keep pushing for accountability for those funds.
I will email, board, I'll just email you with a few of those facts, in case you'd like to, you know, have that on hand. But that's all, President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. And thank you for your service on the Utah School Board Association for the last two years, on that Board of Directors representing our district. I think that advocacy is critical as we move into the legislative session and, and having that information is helpful for board members. Thank you. Board, I'll start down with Ms. Barber and just go through board reports and opportunity to share highlights of a couple of things you participated in.
Okay, I'll be brief because I think we've all attended a lot of the same things. I mentioned this in workshop, but one of my favorite things I've done recently is just visiting a lot of schools and watching instruction from teachers. It's been really helpful for me, particularly in elementary schools. I'm gonna head to some high schools coming up, but, and junior high. But I was able to witness some of our new curriculum in the elementary schools being used. And that's probably been the most beneficial for me to learn about the teachers using it and also students, because I get so many questions. But just being there in person was, was really helpful. My daughter actually got to participate in the Greek dinner that you guys had highlighted. So that was really fun to see. They're not just learning how to read, they're learning about so many great things in history and science and, and all at the same time. So that's been good. And then my other, other update, I should've shared this last week, was the Davis for Health. I'm on that committee. And so it's been really fun to see, and they're putting together their link provider resource that we're gonna make available to all the school districts. So that's been good.
Thank you. Emily?
Okay, John and I were able to have a follow-up meeting with our high school athletic directors two weeks ago and, and speak to them about the code of ethics. And we just wanted to get their perspective, see how they, how implementation went, just to see how it was received. And we got a, a lot of really good feedback from our athletic directors. And they said that they have appreciated the, the expectations and the framework. And it's been really helpful for them as they have trained their coaches. And so our hope is that they'll just continue to train and that those coaches, those head coaches will train their teams and that it can just trickle down and that hopefully we can see some positive impacts from this coach's code of ethics. And then I was able to attend a Davis Education Foundation Board meeting. And I, all of our holiday initiatives are in full swing. And I just want to remind you, if you're interested in participating in the Elves and the Shoemaker events, you can reach out to Jody or to Ginger in her office for those dates and times. Hopefully, maybe you already received some calendar invitations. But that's just a great event. And then we had a really good finance committee meeting today where we were able to talk about some of our new policies that are related to the finance committee.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna quote John and say you've heard enough from me. So I don't really have
Okay, well, I'm just going to quote John and say you've heard enough from me, so I don't really have anything to share this time.
Okay, I'll be very, very brief. I was able to attend a Fairfield Junior High Choir Concert and I've got several other concerts that I'll be attending next week. Enjoyed the bell choir tonight and this has been mentioned, but Davis High Beauty and the Beast was amazing and looking forward to more performances by all of our talented students.
Okay, we've been asked to be brief, so I'm going to be really brief, but I will shout out to Davis High with Beauty and the Beast because it was truly awesome. I did master board certification this week and that was a great review of board finances and all the complexities of some laws to do with, that we deal with as board members. So I recommend, even if you didn't do it, it's a good review. And then we just had policy meeting, audit committee meeting, we had a lot going on actually, but that's all I'm going to say.
And in relationship to audit committee, we, we do, Mr. Luffel, we have interviews scheduled. So Board, we, we'll be getting that done next week is our plan and then make a decision and move forward. One thing about the code of ethics meeting that Ms. Price mentioned, Mr. Zerbakan and Dr. Linford is, and I don't know if you know this, but Dr. Best mentioned at that meeting that the number of calls that he's received this fall from angry parents has diminished significantly. And he attributed a lot of that to the coaches and how they've implemented this code of ethics. So, and I think we were both just very pleased with, as you mentioned Ms. Price, but the feedback and, and they get, they're doing things even in the winter that they didn't do in the fall to continue to make it even more productive. So appreciate that.
Excellent follow-up. And then just on the note of audits, so the full board's aware. Mr. Robison let me know that in addition to their work on the RFP, the audit that's been conducted on the district self-insurance plan is delayed until a report in January. So that's another item that'll be kind of pending for the future, Board. Thank you. Board, are there any requests to move, oh Superintendent, here I am, just jumping ahead again tonight.
No, I don't have much. I want to, just a couple of things. I think we have Farmington High students in the house again. Farmington High students, give us a wave. Yep, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Allred.
That assignment keeps our room full.
It's good to have you here.
Love it.
You know, I also, on, you know, as a member of the cast of Beauty and the Beast, I want to thank you for your kind comments. It's really rewarding and gratifying to see this kind of praise for our work. But no, sincerely, really excellent, excellent. I want to echo that. Excellent work.
Awesome.
President Mumford, I had one. Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
Cruz reminded me of this when he talked about his assembly. I was able to attend that today for their fundraising. And I know there's so many others throughout the school district they're doing. I just thought it'd be fun, maybe is, well, I guess it won't be you, but in the new year, it'd be fun to just have, or maybe a social media thing, just a recap of every school's efforts for fundraising. I think that's something Davis School District does so well. It's usually student-led, which is the thing I really want to show, that our students are looking for ways to serve in their own communities and I think it'd be a fun thing to highlight, maybe at the beginning of the year.
The communications department does a really excellent job. They'll kind of reach out to all the schools during the month of December and then summarize some of those amazing things that are happening. So thank you to your team for doing that and we'll find a way to highlight it. Maybe in Board Briefs, we can add an extra link or something, so the more people that can see that excellent work, the better. I love that reminder. Thank you. Great. So consent items, are there any requests to move a consent item to the business agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve consent items one through four.
I move we approve consent items one through four.
I'll second that. Thank you. A motion from Ms. Price, a second from Ms. Gerard. All in favor of approving consent items one through four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's unanimous. Business items, our first one is the Head Start and Early Head Start Report. That's been included in your packet by Mr. Zerbakan. Any questions about that before we have a motion? I think we're ready for a motion on Head Start.
I move that we approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Minutes Budget and Enrollment Report as indicated.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion from Mr. Robison and a second from Ms. Price to approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Reports. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is a continuation of what we had in workshop this afternoon where Dr. Wilkie presented the TSSA School Land Trust Framework for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That's what school community councils will use as they formulate their school improvement plans. Let's take a motion and then we can open for discussion or questions.
I move to approve the School TSSA School Land Trust Framework for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So a motion from Ms. Powell and a second from, we're going to give it to Ms. Price. She was first, from Ms. Price. Any questions for Dr. Wilkie, now that you've had a few more minutes to think about that as it was presented in the packet? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on our agenda was an item that was considered by the finance committee this afternoon. I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Luffel for that.
Thank you, President. As per our new policy, the finance committee met with South Weaver in consideration of their CRA that they are proposing. We met with the city manager, the city planner and the finance director and they were very cordial and very nice in their presentation. Based on the policy that we just recently passed, we have two choices and that is either to deny in finance committee or to bring it to the full board for consideration. At this time, we are recommending that we do not present the presentation to the full board. We will communicate that to the city and see if they have any follow-up at this time.
Thank you. So there's no action on item number three tonight. Next up is item six F dash one oh four. It's our rental policy. It's on a first and final reading at the recommendation of the policy committee and Mr. Anofrio will present.
Thank you, President Mumford, Superintendent, members of the Board. We have three main changes here on this five-year review. The first is that we made a change to the aspirational purpose and philosophy section just to make people clear that we do not intend to compete with private business with our rentals of our, of our facilities. Our second piece was that there were modest changes and increases to the rental fees. And lastly, we made it explicit that the fields, the playing fields are, some of our playing fields are available for rental. This policy is passed through the policy committee and we present it to you on first and final approval.
Thank you. Let's take a motion and a second and then we can ask questions of Mr. Anofrio.
I move that we approve six F dash one oh four rental policy on the first and final.
Second.
Thank you. So a motion from Ms. Hogan, a second from Mr. Robison. Any questions regarding that rental policy and use of our facilities? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Anofrio. The last item on our agenda this evening is the school calendar for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. That was in our last board meeting. Ms. Keller, do you want to review some highlights and what you've heard during that community feedback period?
Good evening, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Superintendent Linford, Mr. Luffel and the Board. We had more comments this year than last year, three thousand eight hundred and eleven total. And many were concerned about the starting of the school, on, starting school on August fourteenth and the impact this has on summer vacations. And they commented on the weather in August and May and the temperature in the classrooms and, and others liked the calendar. I had one that said, "Let's keep this calendar in perpetuity." That was one of my favorite comments. So, but they ran the gamut from positives and negatives and as you can imagine with so many comments. So you can see in your packet that I provided a breakdown of the comments and a majority came from parents, sixty percent. Twenty-four percent came from school employees, fourteen percent from students and two from community members. And there is a section on the survey where people could choose their three most important calendar features from a list. And in this section, the choices, the choices with the parents and teachers or employees, they were really, they were aligned mostly. The first, the very first mentioned one feature was having a winter break lasting two weeks. And both parents and teachers valued this substantial winter break. And the second most mentioned feature for parents was starting the school year later in August. And that was third most mentioned for teachers. And the third, the second most mentioned for teachers was that it was important to end the school year before Memorial Day and that was third for parents. So some wondered why Davis is starting earlier than a neighboring district, yet our breaks and ending dates are very similar, almost identical in fact. And the reason is that a few years ago, the Board, your great Board, gave teachers, provided teachers five extra prep days. And that is five more than the state requires. And we really do value preparation time and our teachers and this prep time benefits teachers and students. So this is also five extra days of pay for our teachers. So it's really hard to fit everything in with the priorities and just, and that's why we're starting earlier. So one last thing, and I don't know if you want to pull up this slide, okay, that was, this slide is, that shows the stars. There are forty, forty-one districts up there and twenty-five started the week that we started this year. Either earlier or later, but in that week. And I feel that we're really on par in alignment with the rest of the state. So I appreciate the involvement of the committee and the overwhelming number of comments from parents, teachers, staff and students. And some commanders stated that we don't read the comments, we don't listen to them and we don't take them into consideration. But I want you to know, we did read the comments. I read those comments. I did take them into consideration. Our, our committee took them into consideration, not this year's comments, last year's comments. And they worked very hard weighing the options and with the district priorities and, and how we could make a calendar that was best for student learning. And that is the calendar I'm presenting to you tonight and hope that it will be approved on this, passed on this reading.
Thank you. So let's do a motion and a second and then if there's questions for Ms. Keller, we'll, we'll go ahead and fill those.
I move that we approve the calendar as presented to us. The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school calendar on a second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So a motion from Mr. Robison and a second from Ms. Price. That opens the opportunity to have some discussion on the calendar. Why don't you go ahead first, Ms. Hogan, since you're serving on that calendar committee?
Okay, yes. Just a comment, not really a question. Like I mentioned in the last meeting, I, there, because of those five days and all the other things that we want to consider, there are kind of the two options of starting, ending before Memorial Day or ending after Memorial Day. And I just think because of the volume of comments that we receive about the early date that it might be worth the Board looking into that for the future. This year, it's hard to do because of graduation dates have already been set.
I'm going to ask the audience to please refrain from shouting out to the Board while they're discussing. Thank you.
But I think that it is something that we should look at as a Board and perhaps we could do, I'd be in favor of surveys or other things that we could look at to address that issue that we are having every time we start so early.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Any other comments, Ms. Powell?
Yeah, I would like to echo that. Like for me, I don't personally have a preference. I can see the benefits of both, but I'm a little concerned just as a Board member. I do frequently get this wanting to start later comment. And so I would feel more comfortable if we would either bring this to community councils to have it discussed at school level and have them bring it back to us as a Board or even a survey or something like that. I would just feel a lot better. But I understand that this year, because of our graduation commitments already, it's really difficult to change it this year.
Thank you. Yeah, the graduation's an interesting element. Even just the academic impact of going later in the year, you've extended long past AP testing, rise testing and a lot of other things that are kind of benchmarks in the learning process. And then we have school after that. It feels like there's some value in, in the way the calendar committee has paced it around natural holiday breaks and those end-of-year and end-of-level tests. But I do think that it, this volume of comments shows that there's a need to, to work on that more next year. Ms. Barber?
I, I would just echo that. I mean, everyone, so many people you talked to, I shouldn't say everyone. But it's a recurring thing, is that early August start. And like I said in our last board meeting, I've understood the academic part of it. That really changed my framework when I was looking at, we have to be in school so many days and we have these other deadlines that are out of our control, so let's look at what is within our control. And I keep hearing, you know, the ending before Memorial Day that completely conflicts with the August one, with starting so late, so early in August. So I feel like maybe we, maybe we go back to the drawing board, but the thing that I, on our other days off, I think we put that on the table. What I would say is, and I don't think we talked about this last meeting as much, is those professional development days that we've given to teachers, those are really important. When you go talk to teachers, they are, and they're, they're really thoughtfully placed throughout the calendar too. I've noticed other school districts, it's a little more haphazard, but I've had so many teachers reach out and say, "Thank you for thinking of my time and my scheduling and so that I can get my grades in, I can prepare for school to come back." And that, I would really hate to take those, that away from teachers after we've seen such good success with it. So just echo the thanks that I've heard from teachers on that one. So thank you for that.
Ms. Price?
I, I also like the idea of, of maybe a survey or just gathering more information from our, from all of our stakeholders. And I would be really curious to know, maybe if the opinion differs from elementary parents versus secondary parents. Because I know, I've, I've really noticed a benefit of the earlier start with older students. But, but anyway, that's, that doesn't really mean much, but I, I would be curious to see if, if there really is a difference between, you know, maybe the parents that do like it or the secondary and the parents who don't or the elementary. I don't know. But I, I do like the idea of getting some more information from parents, teachers, students. So, and thanks for all the work that you've done.
Mr. Robison and then Dr. Linford?
I, I think that having served on the calendar committee as a member of the curriculum department for years, the one thing that we need to make sure we keep in mind, what you're, you know, what you just said, Ms. Price, is you have a variety of stakeholders. And what, what became very apparent to me on that calendar committee from the, from the very first meeting and the years following that is you can have a really legitimate reason as a teacher, but that reason might not be acceptable for a parent and vice versa. I mean, you have AP testing, you have AP teachers, you have all these different factors that need to be looked at and, you know, put in the equation and you know that, Ms. Keller, because this is what you do. So it's, it's not, it's not just what would you like, but it's, it's like how are we going to efficiently run the school district from start to finish? And, and, because we got into situations with spring break that we ended up kind of conflicting with our AP program and AP testing, because kids were gone for spring break and they came back and a day or two later they had to take a test. And so we realized, you know, that just doesn't work. So there, there's a lot of input. So if we change, I think we need to, and you will, factor in the stakeholders and hearing from all of them so that we make the best decision.
We have a lot of comments we can look at for some advice for next year.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that and, and it, you know, it is important to note that we, it's not done in a vacuum. It's done with a large committee with a lot of time and experience to, to inform the decisions on that. Part of the challenge that we have is, you know, when I was hired as a school director, our first, the first superintendent I worked for challenged me to get graduation before Memorial Day. Because all we heard about all the time was that why would we come back after Memorial Day? And everyone's nodding because they know it's true. And so second superintendent. And so the second superintendent I worked for didn't just encourage me, he gave me a directive, like, let's get this thing done. It was actually the pandemic that allowed us to bump all of the other districts that were having graduation, the the sweet spot before Memorial Day. So because we stuck with Weaver State, the only place that can hold our graduations at our large high schools, we were able to take their slots. So I have no doubt that in a, in a, in a future year, we could, we could swap. You know, we could, they would be glad to take our spots. I think what's probably really on the table, because I think we'll just reset that, that thing that I heard about for years as a school director. It's ridiculous coming back after Memorial Day. The kids aren't learning anything, especially at the elementary level. I I think what's on the table is, you know, a two-week Christmas break or a, or a full week of of spring break. I think we need to really, if we want to think about, you know, it's coming later. And again, we're with the the vast majority of the state, and when we're starting, some start earlier than us. But if we want to do that, I really think we have to look at those vacation days. I don't think our target should be Memorial Day because we have history. You know, before you tear down the fence, you have to ask why someone built the fence here. And that, that, my experience is, because I heard it for six years and I felt it as a high school principal, that Memorial Day is probably not our target. It's probably those other things.
Can I add something to?
Yeah, Ms. Gerard and then Ms. Price.
Okay. I I just was going to echo what Superintendent Linford said. I don't think we, I think we need to be very careful about, if we were to give up those earlier graduation dates, I don't think we could get them back because there's a lot of other districts that would step in and take those. So I think we need to look elsewhere instead of that. But it is, is something that I I think we can really take a look at because I've heard from a lot of parents about the start date. But I I don't think we should go to changing the graduation.
Ms. Price? And I'm, I'm also gonna comment about graduation and our venue. I don't know why, when my first son graduated in two thousand nineteen, I'm not sure why we were limited on the tickets that we, or the number of people that we could have in attendance. But with my other two sons who have graduated, we didn't have that limit. And it was the same venue, so I'm not sure what changed. But I think if we were to lose the D Event Center, I think it, I don't know that it would be worth. I don't know. I think there is a lot to consider because the D Event Center is such a great venue where families are able to invite whomever they want to come and celebrate their child. And, yeah, so I I think that we do, we have to be very careful about this. Ms. Hogan?
Yeah, I guess I'm just gonna make a point. Looking back as a parent, so I'm just speaking as a parent before I got on the board, and I wasn't in education for years, and so I don't understand all the issues. But most of my kids were on the other schedule where we did have those few days after Memorial Day. And I don't know, they worked fine for us. So I'm just wanted to share that opinion.
Ms. Powell?
Add something real quick. Yeah, I actually think that, me too. So I've had kids on both schedules, and personally, I'm fine with either way. But I do think it might be a good time to, because now we've had a lot of parents and students and teachers on both schedules to really, I would be totally open to just do a survey. And or or even a community council where they can flesh out all the details and what's going on. It's not quite as simple as, you know, it's not always quite as simple as it looks, so.
Thank you. So, Ms. Barber?
Oh, I was just gonna say, we do have a student board member here, so I think it'd be fun to hear from a student perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, just from, just in my own experience, especially with this year starting so early, I did not hear very many complaints from students. I didn't really, it didn't really affect me personally. I think it went perfect. All the students that I talked to were, they were happy with it. They weren't that affected with starting earlier, starting later. They didn't really care. I feel like the main focus of the Memorial Day, that big part is just being a student who's gone through ending school after Memorial Day, then ending school before. I like ending before a lot more because my family always goes on vacation during Memorial Day. And when we come back, it's just, I have no drive to go back to school. So either sometimes, I shouldn't be saying this as a student president, but either sometimes I just wouldn't go to school. I'm like, there's no point. I'm not gonna be doing anything. We're not doing anything in class. These are just extra days to fill, I guess. And but now, ending before Memorial Day is just, I feel like I'm working all the school year. It's, everything's great. And then those last couple of days are just a good kind of wind down, get ready now this year for me for graduation. And then in the past years, I finished all my final testing. And then when the break comes around, Memorial Day hits, and I'm done. I finished all my work. All my work is usually done within the, the last three days of the school year. And I don't have any other extra days to really come back for. I just think that's very valuable. It's just, you end on Memorial Day. That Memorial Day usually tends to push students away from the school, so.
Interesting. Really good perspectives, I think, as we try and get to a solution that works for the most people. It's a, it's a complex thing. Let's focus tonight on the the current resolution that's before us. And then I'd invite board members that have a significant interest to work on some kind of a motion to request in January of a way to structure the kind of process that would be good for engaging parent feedback and teacher feedback and and even student feedback so that we could kind of look at some of those disparities between elementary and secondary and the impacts on student mental health by ending the semester before Christmas. I've heard a lot of students really value that hard break and ability to reset over that break. And so if we, you know, if you lose a week of Christmas, what does that do to that whole timing? And so there's a lot of factors, and a survey would have to be crafted in a really thoughtful way so it doesn't just become a popularity contest type thing. So any other questions before we vote?
Ms. Gerard?
I just wanted to reiterate how grateful we are for the calendar committee and the work that they put in and everything. Thank you so much for your direction there. And it it's a complex, I know we have other members of the calendar committee here, too, tonight, and Kristen. And we appreciate your work so much. It's not an easy job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. And and I think the comments from the community know that those were, impact the board and and that they're under consideration, too. Thank you. All in favor of the motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six calendar as posted in your exhibit? Please say aye on the second and final reading. Please say aye.
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 Thank you. That one's unanimous. Board, we need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of litigation and personnel. So I'll take a motion and a second on that, and then we'll need a roll call vote.
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of litigation and personnel.
I'll second.
Thank you. So a motion from Ms. Gerard and a second from Ms. Barber. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We'll head to closed session. Thank you, everyone, and have a Merry Christmas.